Yeah, it's seven P M. So I'd like to call this regular Board of Selectmen meeting to order on Tuesday, January seventeenth in your 2023 seven P M. This is a hybrid public meeting. So anybody can attend in person or electronically. Any interruption or disruption, you'll be asked to leave. We will just shut you out of the video. If you have something to say for our audience of citizens, please raise your hand, give us your address and your name. And also the same goes for those on the Zoom, name and address, and we will call on you. Okay, if you'll join me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with no end, no justice or wrong.
I do have one modification to the agenda. I'd like to add nine point four resignation. We have a resignation we want to look for. I make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of adding nine point four resignation of Lisa Rose. Any questions, comments, all those in favor? We'll get the minutes. Make the motion that we approve the best from the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. I can still make the motion on both. You could just abstain from the vote. Any discussion on those minutes?
Very short.
It was short.
There were, I, there were gonna have a couple minutes now.
Keep it up. I had to confess I'm seven minutes late and Hillary after two. Hearing hearing nothing informative. All those in favor? Extentions, one. Audience, citizens. Everybody on Zoom, need to say anything that's not on the agenda? Thank you. Full business. Okay, we have a couple of things we'd like to discuss about appropriate ARPA funds. One is a mini excavator for D P W. So Beth, why do you need this?
So we're proposing to to purchase this. It's very efficient in helping us maintain our drainage swales throughout town and also install some drainage at Rec Park that's needed that otherwise we'd have to sub out. I don't know if people are familiar with an excavator. Basically, it's a, we're gonna purchase one if you approve it with rubber tracks that allow to go over lawns and not disturb the turf. So it makes for doing repairs, less damage to the properties. Also, when we're working on the sides of the road, it can swing three sixty, which allows us to work off the edge of the road and not close the road completely while we maintain the swales. So just everything about it will help us be more efficient with the limited crew that we do have.
Any questions for Beth?
How much?
Ninety thousand.
How much does it cost? Can you rent these?
We had to rent one for Aradoni. What did that cost, Beth?
To rent one runs about three thousand a week.
What do you, what are you gonna anticipate the hour, you know, annual hour usage for this thing? For daily use?
Yeah, I would say we would use it if we had one. It's just a more efficient machine than a backhoe. So we probably would use it at least once a week. A job that would take the backhoe, which is a larger machine, it's awkward in the way that it has to turn around and to load the trucks. I would say what you can do in an eight-hour day with a backhoe, you could do in four hours with the mini.
How often did we rent one last year?
We just rented one for the week to do the Aradoni project. But I will say we've spent a lot of our time dedicated to the improvements at Rec Park and the maintenance of the shoulders of the road and the drainage trails has been neglected over the past few years. And that really should be a priority for us.
Okay, what about going into a partnership with another town that has one so we could use it? Share? Have we thought of that? Is that viable?
We actually do that, but nobody wants to share the equipment because it's such poor repair. The second you borrow, the hydrolytic oil will go out and you'll be fixing it.
It's hard to share a piece of equipment that is utilized to this extent. The repairs, you'd have to enter into a very solid agreement where both towns would be responsible for any repairs. And then you don't know the skill level of the crew you're partnering with and who will use it. So it gets tricky on how to share.
Okay, so just let's talk about the actual work that happened on Aradoni Road. If we had, you rented a mini. So that many man, person hours and excavator rental. How, how many, where did it cut that job by time?
Well, that job we couldn't have done without the machine that we rented. So we would have had to sub that out. And I believe the engineer gave us an estimate of between sixty and seventy thousand to do that job. And we did it in-house for fifteen.
Do we have a trailer or what? It also has a thumb like opposite, I like road, when we clear that giant swell, it's always full of trees that fall down the hill. It would allow you to just pick them out and throw them in the dump truck from the grass of the lawn, which is Mary Rocco and on down. Actually, it's not Mary. It's the next owner, past Mary. That's a big swell. That swell clogged and caused the neighbor across the street, his entire driveway to be empty.
Yeah, we went out there and did that. Okay. Any other questions?
Can we think about it? You don't need an answer tonight, right?
It's just, um, it'll probably take a year to get it. But what's going on right now?
Let me ask you what kind of questions do you have? I'm looking at people in the trucks, people on the machine. If we're cutting time and we can use it more effectively. For, we have a lot of swales in town. We have a lot of drainage issues. And how long does a piece of machinery like this last with proper maintenance and better than average usage?
This would last well, you know, fifteen years easy with minimal maintenance. It's not something that would be on a ten-year replacement cycle. It would be more fifteen, twenty.
So have we not done some repairs some, in the town because we don't have something like this? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's just, you know, we're a small crew and we've been prioritized to to do the improvements at Rec Park, which, you know, you do something in-house and it's a significant saving. So we've been focused on that, but now that is wrapping up. And we're looking to do some maintenance of our drainage trails and just time-wise, it's way more efficient with a mini excavator. There's less damage, less cleanup. And that, that right there should sell it. Just, we are only a five-person crew. And you could clean swales on the edge of the road with one person in the machine, one person in a truck, and then one other person and still be able to do other work with the two other crew as opposed to everybody on board and just slow going with a backhoe.
We run our five-person crews. We're working at two hundred dollars an hour at least. So we have the, we have the ability to cut work.
Well, I mean, the thumb would just be great.
We have the ability to cut work time-wise. Do more work.
There's one project at Rec Park that the Little League field, the outfield floods, and we put it out to bid last year. I believe last spring, and we came in with a quote at seventy thousand dollars. And that's because we can't make those repairs with the backhoe that we have. It would destroy the Little League field. And with a mini, we'd be able to handle those repairs in-house.
At what cost?
Well, we would, I mean, you'd still have to purchase the perforated pipe and the stone. I haven't priced that out, but typically, when you bid something out, the biggest cost is labor and equipment. So you could, I'm sure you could do that project for under twenty thousand.
So, okay, so there's a savings of fifty thousand. So my other question is, we do the Little League field, we clean up the swales of drainage and stuff. You're gonna tell me that this excavator is not gonna sit around down at the D P W once we do that, correct?
Correct, because the drainage swales, it's something you should be maintaining on a regular basis and not wait five, ten years before you go back. It should be an annual thing. So it should be used very frequently.
All right, I'm set.
So the only question I have, it sounds like there's other things we want to talk about. We only have two hundred, maybe three thousand remaining. So my thought would be just to hear what other projects are out there and we have to discuss and prioritize. I see the fire department may have something.
Yeah. Okay, Beth, we may come back to, but if you're hanging in there for us.
Sure.
So the other thing is a Ford F-150 crew cab pickup for the volunteer fire department. They have asked for a command vehicle and to a vehicle that can get to the scene and bring members of the fire teams to, that are not on the trucks, to those. And I see, I wanna say assistant chief, I'm not sure, but if you could speak to the F-150, please.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, Steve's on and
Steve, you got a baby at home. How's that baby doing?
Everything's great. I appreciate it. It's a, it's a game changer, but loving every minute of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a game changer. But the only reason, the only reason I didn't call on you right away is because my daughter's got a three-week-old and when I talked to her on the phone, she mumbles due to lack of sleep. So I don't wanna put you in a tough spot. I, you know, you or Jeff can both talk to this. Your call, Chief.
Yeah, and fortunate enough for me, I've had lots of practice with my job of the little bit of sleep. So I feel like I've been training my whole life for this. So it's been, it's been good. I can eat, I can speak on it if.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, this, uh, F-150 or pickup truck, style truck that we are looking at is to replace our service truck right now, which is a Ford F-450, big diesel duly. Again, it was originally purchased back in two thousand and seven to tow around a big enclosed trailer after the anthrax scare and they had all these hazmets situations going on. And that's what these original projects and trucks were put out to be. It has become like our utility vehicle, a chase vehicle for other EMS calls and moving personnel to scenes. Also, we did it for training and going to meetings, county meetings and all over the state, just not that very efficient of use for that kind of stuff, being a diesel again, costs and just kinda being getting up there for what we could use it for. And then with the recent denial of the forestry grant that we were not gonna reapply for, we would, this current truck that we have that we're looking to replace would be retrofitted to utilize as a forestry utility vehicle and then at about a third of the cost of a new, new vehicle. And then again, this, this service command style truck would be in place of the service and would be a lot more efficient for, for the department. And it's been something that's been in capital for about four or five years. And unfortunately, the price is significantly higher than what it was originally planned for. But that's unfortunately the way where we're at in the world right now. So that's where we're at. If you have any questions.
How many people were there? Five?
Yeah, it's a standard crew cab. We wanted the bed availability because we have the gear and tools that we use, not putting them in the, in the cabs, anything now. The Clean Cab Cancer Initiative, that's been very strong push throughout the fire service that keeps all those contaminated still on the, in the elements until we get them back to the firehouse where we can clean them all up until we put them back into the truck.
You gonna put a cap or a tile cover or something on the back?
So it would be an open bed in the back and actually almost like a tiered system. They make like a big slide-out tray that would go underneath it, that would be able to still store stuff out of the elements. So it kind of splits the, the bed in, in half. It's actually a really neat system that they have that we specked out. That's, that's part of the price that's included in the three specs along with, unfortunately, a big chunk of that is the radios and light systems that are, obviously, you know, Lisa is extraordinary right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So if we approved these, we're basically at ninety thousand, at ninety-three. Unless we're gonna have leftovers and other projects as we finish them and go through total estimate of one month. And
Then the other question.
I have a question concerning that one's request. Would this mini excavator be something that could be used on the rail trails?
Yes. Beth, let me ask the expert.
Yes.
We tried to tell them.
I tried to answer the question.
Ann's question is, is this something that we could get on the rail trail and use it there to clear the, I guess the thumb thing was kind of intrigued us all to move wood off the trail, clean up the, I don't know about clean up the trail, use it on the rail trails?
Yes, that's something that we could use there as well as some of the open space parcels that have a tighter access road that would allow us to maintain those as well.
Are we allowed on the real trails? We're actually
Beth works with, we're in two maintenance groups now, coordinating with the state.
Yeah, the state.
We just did a maintenance day of the River Trail. Without us, they
Yeah, the towns are the ones keeping
That last one, a lot of trees came down. Any other question? Are there other projects coming down the line?
There's a million of them out there, but right now we
There are some. But these, these are two that have been consistently being requested over the, over the years. And to get a jump
Did we get more information on, was it the drainage study that just requested?
Yeah, so I have the drainage study, these two different things. Beth and I were talking today. There's six culverts that were deemed needing repair or replacement.
Well, a year from now.
And those culverts are, we're waiting for a proposal to have them engineered so ready when a grant comes up. The drainage, more of a drainage type stuff around the roads to our swales and at the lake. That is more of the stuff we would do ourselves. So we, we can't really, unless it's a small culvert. We can't make a bridge, but we can replace
Gotcha. You can fix it. So we're doing, they're doing the engineering study to see?
We're, we're trying to get a proposal. The hardest thing with engineering companies is there's, there's swamp right now.
Everybody's swamp.
But I feel good having a hundred thousand left to hold, because we have to have it all spent by the end of two thousand and forty-four.
We don't seem to have that.
Yeah, I don't think
That's not a problem.
All right. I, I know the fire, I know the fire department has been asking us about this for a number of years. And we don't, we get it. They deserve it. I've seen. You know, the, the good news is they're taking the existing F-450 command vehicle and turning it into something that we can use at a third of the price. I think we, we put in the budget like two hundred thirty thousand dollars for that.
To replace it, which right now we're gonna put in, I think eighty thousand to do a total retrofit.
Right, so we're saving some of that money there. So I'm all for that. And the mini excavator. You know, I'll be honest with you. I see the D P W out there. I see him up at Rec Park and anything we can do to let them, we always say it, work smarter, not harder. You know, they're using antiquaged equipment. They're using equipment that wasn't designed what we're asking them to do in some cases. So with this excavator, I see a savings in person hours. I see a savings in any kind of fees and stuff. I also see a savings in contractual work. So, you know, I'm for that too, but we'll put it to a vote. I moved to approve the following proposed, I'll do a singular, the compact mini excavator for ninety thousand dollars out of ARPA grant funding. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay, I moved to approve the Ford F-150 crew cab pickup for the Columbia Volunteer Fire Department at the cost of a hundred thousand dollars out of the ARPA grant funding. Any more discussion? All those in favor of that? Chief? I hear that baby. Are you, you helping with the bottle service or what?
Yes, I am. And I appreciate you guys' support again. Thank you.
You know, you guys, all of you, guys, gals, you name it, we know you're there for us. So, thank you. Beth? Got your excavator, I believe.
No, all we have to do is wait for it.
Yeah.
Very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next thing is update, the next steps for the consideration board select for the HVAC upgrade and climate control of Horace W. Porter School. I read that and it's written. It's the first line in the charge that we're gonna put forward to the committee. And here's my my question. Before I put this to a motion to approve, it says, whereas the Columbia Board of Education have identified the need for HVAC upgrades and climate control at Horace W. Porter School. Right off the bat.
Where's the mold?
Right off, that would be climate control. We'll control the mold. That's, that's the whereas. I do not see air purification in here. Okay, I have asked and I'm asking again. Climate control, will it eradicate the mold? Is that our dire need? Because I don't, air purification, I don't know where we're getting that. So air purification, from what I've heard, I was at the first committee meeting for a while, and it was adding extreme cost to this job over at the school. And yet I don't see air purification in any of this wording. I've asked if it's been mandated by the state that we do air purification. I get a no. Our, our need there is the moisture eradication because that's where the mold grows. It wasn't black mold, it was mold. It caused us to you know, eliminate usage of those classrooms until we could get it cleaned out and it costs money. I get it. But it's the moisture of the lower A-Wind right now. So, please explain it to me if we have something different. I don't wanna go before the town and say we want a multi-million dollar work done on this when I don't even know if that's what, what's, what's called for. I need clarity. So where do I get?
I'll just tell you what commentary wrote might help. They required enhanced circulation of outside air and the ability to circulate chilled air. And they needed to bring up their existing HVAC system, the COE compliance system in the classrooms by quieter ventilators. They were pretty specific.
Well, at this point, most of the school is just radiators, right? Quiet, maybe.
And mics aren't reheating on the line.
Right.
We're heating.
Yes.
Mike Sylvester, the school maintenance director. Mike, can you help me understand?
Yes, actually, the, what you're talking about in this system is it, it is in fact a way of air purification. If you're going to bring in outside air, which they've been calling these energy recovery ventilation, is you're bringing outside air in and it's going through a filter. It's not like we currently have right now where we have exhaust fans that are creating negative pressure in the building and bringing outside air through any cracks, any areas. You open the door, you're bringing in outside untreated air. So those systems in a sense is air purification of what they've been talking about. It's not that we're doing UV treatments. We're not doing any other treatments to the air, but we are filtering it so that we're removing contaminants when we're bringing that outside air in.
So we're removing contaminants from the fresh air outside.
Yep, because you have to limit, because there's, you have humidity and you have mold in the air. So
Why do we allow recess?
And, and pollen.
I'm sorry, why do we allow recess then? See, this is where I'm confused and I have to sell this to the town. See, this is where I'm confused and I have to sell this to the town. Christine, I see you on there in your shape. Please explain it to me then.
Because you, you also.
I just think it's being taken out of context. That's all, by saying no recess.
You're, I agree with you on your first part of that. It is taken out, I, I see HVAC and climate control.
And filtration.
I'll step aside. I, I mean, if, if I'm wrong, please.
Well, we put the building committee together. We were talking about it. It was to address the mold issue in A-Wing.
Right.
Here, it was, there was, I'm going to tell you right now. I do not support air conditioning and purifying of the whole school. I, I will not, cannot do it. Numerous studies have shown there's more pollutions and contaminants in indoor air than outdoor air. And if I want to feel better, I will take a walk outside. I don't go into a building and go into a mall and go for a walk in the mall that has all this purified air. It's outside air. We have windows that open and if you need to ventilate a room, you can do that. I don't understand.
You cannot do that in the winter time, though.
You can cre- okay, my mother was from Norway. Her and five out of, five of her nine siblings never missed a day of school. Every hour, they would kick every kid out of school, open all the doors and windows for five to 10 minutes to keep down germs. So it can be done, winters, it, it, so you bundle up, you dress accordingly. And I just, this, I am more allergic to indoor air. I'm allergic to air conditioning. It gives me raging headaches. I, 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 there are some people I understand who have problems with pollens and stuff. But there are other people who have problems with AC and I'm not alone. I'm just not, I have dealt with allergies since I was 10 years old. And I'm way more allergic to indoor air than I am to outdoor air, any day of the week.
So could, can I just, just clarify a few things at least? And, and let me start by saying that the committee has met twice so far. It's it's committed to meeting weekly. So, um, our understanding in advance of this charge coming out, um, and the discussions we had, um, here last night was dehumidification of A-Wing, air conditioning, um, you know, for, uh, for the heat and air exchange. So it's pretty clear that it is A-Wing. So I mean, that's, that's the group to realize that both between, um, the timeframe we have, I think.
And, and nowhere here does it say anything about addressing why there's so much humidity in A-Wing. What, what's going on? Is there a water found, a foundation of water against the foundation that's causing a buildup of humidity in cement? We don't know. And it's, it's not even talked about. We're talking about air conditioning the whole school and doing the whole school and.
But, but that's not, that's not the understanding of this committee. This, this committee. Um, and again, Horace Suckman is going to decide one way or another what the charge is. The understanding for the past two weeks when this committee's been meeting is to mitigate humidity, provide air conditioning and enhance air exchange for A-Wing. That's, that's been, that's been the drive. Nothing about doing the entire school. The only thing related to the entire school would be the need for electrical upgrade because if you're going to upgrade the electrical system, you might as well do it for the entire school for, for various reasons and, and Mike can elaborate better in the detail. So that's the only thing discussed about the entire school. Um, and, and I agree with you Lisa. I mean, there's obviously coming down to the root cause. And the only thing I'm just trying to just throw out there for everyone's consideration is we're on a very tight timeline to try to put forth something. We don't want to put forth anything that's not going to be, um, you know, forthcoming, honest in, in our best estimate, but we want to try to make a recommendation to you in the next couple of weeks so we can race to a town so we have an opportunity to get this grant. Or we could do all the studies that, that you want us to and remember, we will not qualify for the grant unless the deadlines pushed out for the referendum. So.
Chris, let me ask you a question. Has the committee reviewed this proposed charge?
You mean, you mean as far as what's been provided? So, so we've, we've had the information that you have in your packet is the BPH Integrated Services feasibility study. So, so they, they were provided that a couple of weeks ago. We discussed it. Um, we also have the, um, the one pager from Control Air. We had discussed that last night. We had a representative from BPH Integrated Services here spent over an hour walking through um, what they had recommended and it was more of a technical, um, not necessarily this going to cost this. And we tried to focus really, um, understanding, we could ask questions because they're proposing, um, the VRF type of unit. I know we have people that are on the committee, ones you're going to vote for, who has experience with other types of systems. So I think what type of system I think is maybe you know, to be determined, um, based upon what's recommended. But to your original question, we didn't say, oh, you know, 1.8 million is appropriate. Because I don't think we.
I'm just talking about the charger. Is your committee on board with, with the proposed charge?
So, I honestly, we didn't spend too much time talking about it because it's still a draft. Um, I, I had summarized what I thought was the charge and we had talked briefly about that in the first meeting.
Let me ask a question. Are you comfortable with the charge?
I'm comfortable with the charge inward to meet an aggressive deadline. To try to put forth a recommendation in the next couple of weeks. We're not going to have an identified solution, but I think if, um, again, what I'm understanding, what I think we can accomplish within the next few weeks to provide you is, is to continue to meet weekly, to continue to discuss with Mike. We've got Jason who showed up to provide technical expertise to, um, work on an RFP to send out to um, for design, sort of for design services.
In that RFP request, you could spec out exactly what we want these design services to.
Or it could be, could be one or more, the file DRF, ERV, or other types of systems. I, I think with, with the potential recommendation that, you know, we have a rough estimate from Control Air. We have an idea of what the maximum could be and then we have a box that from there we have to work within whatever, if something's approved.
So we're hiring an engineer to be able to assess what the, why there's some.
We already did that.
We did that.
So what's the reason?
The next step is a design, please answer.
What's the reason? What's the reason? Why do we have so much humidity in it?
I think because half of the A-Wing is underground and the upper half heats up in the summer. So you have heat issues in the second floor of summer and, uh, mold issues on them, or ask, ask Mike.
Mike, do you have any sense of that?
For a long time.
Basically, it's, it's our ventilation system that we currently have is just exhaust fans that's bringing in outside air. And then that's where the, the humidity goes into the building. We run the fans. It we, we never have enough either dry air or the ability to dry the air.
Can you just seal A-Wing off the basement part of A-Wing so there's not big air circulation? I know that in the summertime, I finally figured out if I, because I have an open floor plan. If I put a curtain across the cellar so that warm humid air isn't dropping into my cellar, I run my dehumidifier quarter. Because you're just not, so can we seal off the basement section of A-Wing? So you're not getting the humid air infiltrated in there and run some dehumidifiers?
I, I don't believe that would work.
Bigger.
And then who's going to be, who's going to take the water out of them? We're going to have to trade them.
You can have them that automatic drain. They come with automatic drains.
Jeff, you have your hand up. But I'm going to, before I open this up, you, you have some like subject matter expert?
No, I don't need subject matter expert. So I just have a question. Can I ask a question?
You can ask it. I'm not sure we'll answer.
So Jeff goes to Liquid's lane, not here as a fire department, he's a resident taxpayer. Born and raised in this town, went to that school, was in that A-Wing. Um, what is causing, I agree with what Lisa's saying, what is causing this? A lot of people is that's been the original. So where is it coming from? There's a reason why. There's got to be a reason why it's getting into the school.
Yeah, but, but every, even every house that has below grit.
Greened, yes.
Is, um, more easily humid in the, the below grit because it holds moisture or in the earth around.
Condensation.
I understand, but I control mine with the dehumidifier. That pumps itself up because my wife said I had to do it, so I found a better way. So the bottom line is, I, in, in Bill, I want to just clarify one thing. You asked about the charge. When I went to the meeting, this charge was not before them. I had asked that the Board, Board of Education come up with explicit description of what they needed for A-Wing, utilizing their expertise over there. Um, their maintenance director, everybody else for needs. And we didn't get a specific need of what they need.
Well, that, that was my thought on it, is you have a committee with, with expertise and we're, and we're about to appoint people to that, that committee, um, but we should rely upon their expertise to prepare the charge. It's like, like an organization preparing their own usual statement. And that's the way I do it.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. But the, the two of the members on there, the first question was about the BPH and their study and what they proposed for us. And all that they did was talk about that and how it would eliminate what was going on, but also take it a step further and have all this air purification and stuff when that was not so addressed or supposed to be on the charge. Or wasn't mandated. So they did not have, and when I spoke up, one gentleman who was on, owned his own business or did HVAC and uh, air purification, it just seemed to me he was happy to say why the feasibility study worked. It worked for everything. But we don't necessarily need everything. We need what will take care of the problem and keep the kids which are not having to, you know, ingest mold, mold spores and everything else. Um, I, you know, I don't know if it means air purification. That's, that's more than half of the cost.
Who directed this charge?
I worked on it from other charges that other towns have been doing and when the other county turned.
I know that, and I have been told, it's hearsay, but I, you know, Jason knows that, our building inspector and he's end over put in another system that did the air conditioning and heating. Heating was a secondary because it already had heat in there, much like ours. But it also had a, uh, an air control that the moisture did no longer came into the school. They didn't need an air purification system to tune in millions of dollars. I just want, when we go before the town, that they understand we're doing what we're supposed to do. If we, if they want more, I guess you can lay it out to them, but at a cost of millions of dollars, the question is is that what we need to keep A-Wing where we can keep students in and attend school? Air, heat and eradication of the mold issue, which is in itself the moisture. Right?
Yeah.
It just, it opened up in a, you know, oh, I know this. It's all wonderful. Yeah, it'll do whatever we need and so much more. And that was not what I was hoping that they would say. I was hoping they would say, well, let's take a look at the problem and see what we have to do to fix the problem. Not fix the problem and, you know, cool the, cool the earth's air to bring it in and switch it around every three seconds. And I don't know if that is an issue. It's, it's a better than Cadillac system for, you know, a, a problem that may be.
A flat tire.
Chevrolet.
I appreciate you, Chris's, um, comment, the fact that the focus of this point kind of seems to be on the A-Wing where it should be, you know? I'm concerned about expanding it beyond that because you get into a situation where we're going to start backing up the bricks from it.
Yeah, and I, I'm all for doing it right. I don't want to do something that's not right, but I don't know. You have to tell me what the problem is. And then you got to tell me how to fix it. Don't tell me the problem and then say, we can fix it and we can have this grandiose system that I don't know what we truly need. I'm not the expert here. But all I have was a study from a huge system. And everybody went, well, that'll do the trick, you know? Yeah, it'll do the trick. We may not need it.
For 14 days of school, we're a top.
It's.
The air keeps, the air conditioning keeps the temperature steady so the moisture doesn't build.
But there's another problem in the rest of the school.
We're not talking about the rest of the school right now. We're talking about A-Wing.
Well, I would like to see A-Wing notated. That we're not addressing the HVAC for the entire.
But I'd also agree with Chris, if we update the electricity panel stuff, we do it so we'll handle whatever we need to bring into that.
Right, and, and, and part of that, again, Mike can elaborate better and I'm probably going to butcher it, but I mean, it's one solution is a switch box. It would have to happen outside the school. So you might as well get it, you know, for, you know, expansion, um, as necessary.
And this school is only going to grow. I'm not sure if we need the electricity for this. We'll need it for other things. We're going to more electronics. It's a given. We'll need more electricity. It's a given. But I'm not sure the system we're talking about is what we need.
Right, and and again, ma- maybe, you know, I was remiss in, in jumping the gun and trying to trying to get the, the group going in a certain direction, you know, again, this is my understanding of APAP, given the timeframe we have. You know, we have the BPH study, which is a option, right? We had Control Air, which had come in and looked to say, okay, what would it take? They had come up with, as I understand, a similar type of VRF system gave us a number, right? I mean, we have a number and, and maybe it's the worst case scenario. And if that's the number we go before the town, it's the worst case scenario to do the A-Wing for 1.8 million dollars, give or take, depending on what, what everyone's comfortable with going. And that's what we go before the town and what we would be doing, in my opinion, will be trying to get an architect, engineer to design a spec or to say multiple multiple different options, including AV and whatever else they recommend. Then they design the, the bids that, that goes out and you have firms that will bid for that and they could recommend solutions which could be more cost effective. And then again, may, maybe the winning bid is, you know, a million dollars for something which is individual units that are, that are minisplits. I mean, I, I don't think, I don't believe we have the time to decide what's the best path and I don't think we have enough information to do that. It's really trying to, trying to make a recommendation for a path forward to, to try to do it in short.
Yeah, I think we all got kind of bamboozled into this timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I still, I, I, I do agree with Lisa. We've got to figure out what the problem, you always have to assess what the problem is before you come up with a design. And they have some idea, there's humidity there, but why? Eyes are so much moisture.
Right, but, but, but we have to know now that if it truly is, um, a drainage issue that, I mean, separate from this, putting in equipment, a, a side study could be done in whether it's a current drain or whatever, done to try to mitigate the, you know, groundwater from going to that part of the building. I mean, that's something we could do separately. I don't think we.
So you're thinking we could do, I guess I'm thinking that if you assess it, then maybe you could solve it easier than doing something, maybe, maybe not. But I would think you got to assess and know why you're having the issue before you create a design to, um, a plan.
That, no, I, I mean, that's, that certainly would, would be the preferred path, you know, if we had, we had the luxury of time.
What's the, and what's our time? I mean.
You have to have a referendum before February 28th that, that that authorizes the funds for this project. And if we get the grant, it could pay up to half of the cost of the project.
Okay, and if, that's it, that it went through and we don't get the grant, then we're obligated.
You could have a, what happens if the question passes, but we don't get the grant? So in the explanatory, I grabbed Coventry's explanatory on the web. So in the explanatory, I grabbed Coventry's explanatory off the web. It states what the town council is committed to and what they're gonna do if they don't get the grant. So you could put the what ifs into the explanatory. Maybe if we don't get the grant, we're gonna upgrade the electrical, put everything on hold and we study.
I hope we don't do anything. And figure out.
Well, you have to shut down, and I know Barbara's on the line now, but you have to shut down six classrooms this year.
No, we got, I think, I think we gotta fix it somehow, but it's, but it's figuring out what the problem is.
I mean, in the worst case scenario, you throw the several dehumidifiers in there for this, you know, and deal with that until you figure out why you have water.
Barbara?
Hi, how are you?
Oh, wonderful. Thanks for joining us. Just listening or you have information?
I'm listening, but I have to tell you why now, why we're doing so now, why this is so prudent is because the state is offering funding that will assist with this. It's not always going to be there. So we are hoping to secure the funds with the grant.
So Barbara, let me ask you a question then. Welcome to the hot seat. So here we go. What do we need done? What do you, what, what are we hoping to accomplish in A-Wing?
In A-Wing, we are hoping to accomplish getting a new, not just air conditioning, but a new entire circular, and Mike can speak better to this being more of a construction guy. New heating, new ventilation, including air conditioning in that A-Wing due to the mold issue. And the, it's crazy, in the summertime, air conditioners are in each window, they have to run 24/7. We're not even caring that it's cool or hot necessarily, it's to prevent the mold from growing and growing again.
So basically, so the moisture, if we eradicated the moisture there, would that, would that keep the mold from growing?
I'm not a mold expert, but I, I know that we have to get, we have to keep it cool and, and to get rid of the moisture. The heat and the humidity in that wing is, is, I guess it's like a Petri dish for mold.
Okay, so if we keep it at 72 degrees throughout the summer, throughout the 12 days or 18 or the month of June, May or June, sometimes it gets hot in May, if we keep it at 72 degrees, right? Would that be something that would help? Would that eradicate the mold?
So, so, but that's the issue, you can't keep it at 72 degrees. Oftentimes in June, the upper, on the second floor of that A-Wing, rooms get up to 90 degrees. So they get super hot. The other issue is, and again, Mike can speak to this better, the way the heating system works, so in one room, it'll be, you know, 72 degrees and, and then the next room, it's 73. And the person in the 73 room says, turn the heat down. By the, by the time the heat gets all the way to the end of the hallway, their room is at 60 degrees, but the beginning of the hallway is at 80 degrees and that's the winter. So, so it's not just the air conditioning, but it's the heating and, and obviously, most importantly, the mold issue. So yes, if we could keep everything at 72 and keep the humidity down, I, I imagine that that would help with the mold, but with the current system, we can't do that. Mike, do you have anything else that you, did I explain that as well as a non-construction person can explain it?
Yes, well, and like I said before, the biggest thing is our exhaust fans, when you're trying to ventilate the rooms, even if we put ductless split units in there to air condition, we're still bringing the outside humid air back into the building with the exhaust fans. We haven't taken care of that. So all we're doing is just bringing the humidity in and trying to get rid of it. So we're compounding that problem. We're not drying the building out, which in turn, what BVH was recommending is you change it from negative pressure to positive pressure with the energy recovery ventilation, which would remove humidity or add humidity in the opposite seasons, basically. You can, to control the climate in, in the space.
Mike, how old is the system? So if I recall, that system that you're talking about that's working now, that negative pressure, wasn't that done when the roof was done?
No, that was, that was installed in 1996. So that's approx 28 years.
What's its lifespan?
That, that was the, the design that was done back then. It was designed in 94. So that, that's when that renovation took place, was in 94.
And how long is the lifespan on those units? What is that expected to last?
Oh, it, it could run indefinitely as long as we maintain the belts and the motors on the exhaust fans.
And that's mostly in the newer part of the school. If you sealed off A-Wing so that you weren't drawing air through into the other part of the school, could you, can you separate the air?
No, not really. I've, I've had instances where in the farthest wing away from A-Wing, I've had the water condense in there and make that floor and lockers and walls literally sweat. So where we have to go and run mops down the floor because everybody's slipping and sliding on there because of temperature changes with the exhaust fans bringing that hot, humid air in.
I know we had this past, it was September, we, when we had to evacuate rooms, we had teachers complaining of the, of the smell. I mean, it smelled like mildew and mold and you went down there and it, you know, I kept saying it reminded me of, you know, my uncle's basement. A mem, you know, those memories when you're a child, it's, it smelled like a mildewy, musty basement. And that's when the, the air conditioners that Mike's put in all the windows had to run. We have to run air conditioners now with the heat on to offset the way the one room is so hot and the other rooms are cold.
That just tells me there's water. You may have a spring or something along the foundation, the benches. You have moisture inside right now.
Okay, so we're looking at the grant. So we, we have to have a town meeting and we have to have a referendum. And if these, the, you know, the committee is gonna be investigating, you know, hopefully come up with, you know, what's causing it before you come up with a solution, is what I would say. But it sounds like we need to move along, but can, but hopefully not get tied into something until we have more information.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if we have the time or the expertise on this, on this committee currently has its staff to determine who caused.
Can we get some engineers though? I would think there'd be people out there that can determine this. I mean, I don't know.
It'd be hard of our design spec. We'd have to spec the analysis and the solution.
Yeah, some kind of.
And they could review BVH's in-depth facility study.
See if they can come up with something and see what the, because I guess I would want to be sure we're doing something that's gonna fix this.
BVH again?
What's that?
Who, what does BVH do besides tell us what we need? Do they sell it and install it?
No.
They're made on the job?
No, they, they would, if we opened it, they would bid for the engineering and design.
Not the natural.
They, and, and they are, they are the firm that was involved with the 1994 renovation of the school. So they're, they're very familiar with the ins and outs of the school.
Then maybe if you ask them, they would, I mean, it's in here, they, they have a good sense of what's causing this.
We would have to set a town meeting on a board meeting at the center. And then have that town meeting on February 15th, right before the five pack meeting. And then move it towards a referendum on the 28th.
Can we, we can work, we can word it so we're not necessarily locked in.
Right.
My fear would be to, to miss out on the opportunity to get grant funding. You know, that's my fear. If you miss out on this opportunity, well then, why, why not take advantage of free money to the town?
It's not free money, it's my grandchildren's money.
Yeah, careful.
Simplistic way to put it, but I, I would hate to not take the opportunity to, to use money that the state is making available for school systems to help with their.
That's what we're trying to figure out, how we can do that, how we can have the, you know, town meeting and referendum, but not lock us in until we know what, you know, what we want to do.
Has anybody done any test drilling along the foundation, see if there's water hanging out there?
Not to my knowledge, Mike.
It's full of water.
Well, I mean, just, you know, do a test bit, you know, do them all the time.
But so, so Mark, you were saying we could kind of stipulate in this that someone, what we would do.
Right, so I gave you an example of Coventry's, it's very detailed in what happens if the question does not pass and what happens if the question passes, but we do not get the grant. We could specify those. What we're comfortable with.
We can just, we can word it. We'll do, you have to continue to assess and come up with a design and when we come up with something, then, I mean, something.
We'll keep moving forward.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, would, would one way to maybe word it, because the committee had discussed, and I think it was even, even I think, the reality of the timeline, right? I mean, summer's gonna be here, right? I mean, one thought if we could get in place would be to have the electrical operated either this summer, right? We're also told that in a pinch, it could be done over a long weekend. But could maybe the way the referendum, a total sum, but maybe break it up where, you know, the electrical will move forward, you know? Because who knows when we're gonna find out when we're awarding the grant, right? We can move forward with the electrical operated to school we need anyway, regardless of the solution. And then, and then the second phase, you know, the construction, if the grant just doesn't come in, then you know.
The electrical seems like a no brainer.
You could, because Coventry agreed that if they don't get the grant, they're still gonna go forward and replace unit ventilators which have to be replaced. And they're gonna use funds from a previous fund that they haven't used now.
We could figure out how to word that. I mean, I think we should move forward, but somehow not having to commit it until we know what actually is going on. What we're gonna do.
I can just see this at a town meeting. Never ending. I've been to it. It'll never end. You'll have one group here, one group over here doesn't want to spend anything, they went to school there, it was fun. You have a group here that the kids need, you know, the finest air. I get it. I'm the finest, I'm like Lisa, I'll find this air, go outside, but that's me, okay? Without without clear definition of what we're doing and at what cost. And, and I don't know if there can be two options at a town meeting. I don't know if one of them is, if, if the H upgrade HVAC or supplemental heating, primary air conditioning and dehumidification for the, for the moisture. If that's one choice, if it gets the job done to get rid of the humidity. And the other choice is all of that plus air purification. I don't, you know, I don't know for the air purification, if, if the first choice HVAC and humidity and everything can be done without the air purification.
And what's the ongoing maintenance of an air purification?
Not only that, besides, you're gonna lose.
Lots of pressures.
I, yeah, continued maintenance on that, and and but it, but if it's our only choice, it's our only choice, okay?
No, I'm talking about the whole school.
But the other thing is the land grab, it's gonna need to put all this stuff up, I hear it's sizable. So, so that's what I'd like to, that's what personally I would like. I, I would like to see if we can do it with the HVAC and the dehumidification. If that will control the mold and help with the temperatures in the, in the A-Wing. Or if they say that won't work, you need the air purification system, the EV, whatever system that brings it in, puts it through, chills it off in the summer and heats it in the winter and that's, that's exactly what we need.
That discussion was held last night, we've been watching, it's about an hour.
Sunrise.
The HVAC wasn't enough to do that.
And that came from?
From BVH, it did the facility study. So Jason was explaining what Andover Kennebury are doing, Mike was explaining what are requirements of the A-Wing.
And when Jason was explaining when Andover and Killingworth or whoever was doing the, the the committee didn't buy it or understand it or didn't agree or, or Jason said, you know what, write it.
Didn't, didn't Andover and Coventry already have a different air handling system than you have? And the HVAC, addition of HVAC?
Right, Jason.
Was it that question?
At least, at least that's my understanding. I'm not 100% sure what they already had in place. But I believe they were just adding the mini splits or ductless splits. But they already have that kind, the ERVs or energy recovery ventilation system already in place.
That's what I remember here.
Okay, then this has to be changed. It has to be worded correctly.
Why don't we come back and we, we lock up the charge at the next board meeting after the committee addresses the language.
We need to get the, to, we're gonna apply for the grant, we need to get all this.
Well, we already applied for the grant. It says you'll have a charge in place.
So I moved, we tabled the approval of the charge till the next meeting. A discussion, all those are fair. Opposed?
So do we, we don't need to set a town meeting?
We will.
We will.
We have something.
Next board meeting.
We just need.
So we can wait for that, okay.
So just to clarify, so the committee should be the ones redrafting this.
And we can, we can talk, Chris, to present something to the committee and they'll get their. We still have time, we still have to take a stab at it. Good idea.
Okay, no new business. Columbia Lake, Dan Beach. Application for construction of a structure on or over Columbia Lake in nine sleepy hollows. For the replacement and repair of back in the seawall. Now, this is this is the one that veers snakes through there, Mark?
Yes. And it was initially approved.
So basically on this one, if you look at the sketch, the fold out sketch you have, the dotted line is the existing. Want to straighten it so they have a straight seawall there, it's more aesthetically pleasing, number one. It actually adds more of the lake bed back to the lake. Somebody give it a lay-in back to the lake. Somebody give it a layback to the lake. And, uh, the existing dock is to be replaced in kind.
And the original wall was done eighty, eighty years ago.
How many?
Eighty.
Eighty?
I think so. We're going to have historical society. It could be.
Can't do that.
But I, I think it so. Went around the big lot that was in the way.
So LMAC signed up on this.
Yes, after Jim Butler came back with a detailed.
Approve the application subject to the LMAC. New discussion. All those in favor? Uh, application to repair the lake wall concrete step for Michael and Julian Costa. Or is that one again? I know, I know. Repair of the seawall. Last step required repair, great. And I, uh, moved to approve the application, repair of the lake wall concrete step at one sixty eight Route eighty seven. Based on the recommendation and subject conditions set by LMAC, all those in favor?
Aye.
I moved to appoint Jeffrey A. Collins to the Horace Porter School HVAC building committee. And Jeffrey's been on it already?
Yes.
I met him the first night, correct?
Yeah.
He was owner operator, subject matter expert for HVAC. So. All those in favor? Point, I made the motion to appoint Elizabeth Robideau, Assistant Animal Control Officer. She'll be assisting Mike Rizaki.
Yes. I think it's Robida.
Where?
Her name is Robida. Elizabeth Robida.
All those in favor?
Aye.
William Johnson. Building with a six months already. I, I moved to approve William Johnson from the sixth, to approve William Johnson to move from the six month probation, place him as a full time employee. Done a nice job at DEP, done it. New discussion, all those in favor? And number four, nine point four, is we received resignation from Lisa Rose, great account, a paywall specialist. Unfortunately, she's. So I moved to accept the resignation of Lisa Rose. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town administration.
Um, I included in the packets, uh, a list of accomplishments in the year two thousand twenty two. Uh, when you go through it, it was quite a busy year, especially coming out of COVID. A lot of big projects. And we're very proud. And, uh, Blue Rock Park, they're doing Culver. A lot of the, using the ARPA money, fixing the masonry in the history place. Uh, cleaning the ceiling with the most new school. Uh, and a lot of safety changes around our roads. And I, so far, I think the turn lanes at Hunt West. I know going home every day, I'm happy to see a car blue in a turn lane.
It's better.
It's bad.
It ain't perfect.
Jeff, have we had any accidents since that's done yet?
Because, oh, that's.
You still are a little.
I know, it's, it's still a little dark there, still a little orange. It'd be good in the spring if they could paint it again, maybe. Get it a little brighter.
And what?
The lines.
They don't do that.
The state.
Yeah.
Good luck.
So electrical field, where are we on these EV charges?
Where I just checked with, um, Technenergy today. Uh, they're, they expect to hear about the DEP Volkswagen um, money to help offset the costs by the end of this month.
And we're not doing anything until we get the final, uh, cost to the town, correct?
Correct. You have, you'll approve each station one at a time, how many you want. I do think you need to do a horse garage one, no matter what, because.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's good. Uh, Red Park, Winter Wonderland, the second one, walk through, have they rescheduled that?
Um, not yet, but basically whatever date that takes will put in a one.
Okay.
Because she's over thirty right now. We're bringing.
Are we doing on the, uh, are we doing on Department of Public Works?
Good, we're, we're trying to find a window where we can board the cement foundation, uh, the slab, and it's.
What kind of window? You need above any degree of?
We need some warm, we need warm temperature, but we're about to build the roof, so once the roof is built, we don't have to worry about rain. So it's just temperature. Right now it's temperature and rain.
What's the temperature reading?
I don't know.
It's forty six today and forty seven tomorrow.
Actually, I think tomorrow could work, but I don't know if we could get a cement contractor.
Okay.
I also include all the legislative priorities. CCM is a lot briefer, they want to focus on uh, some of the bigger issues, the kind of effects and cost, as at that meeting, and that's more extensive. Uh, we heard from all the legislators that they're listening to us. Uh, hopefully they're listening carefully, because we seem to go through this routine every year. But we're trying to get the state to work with us. Only claim their ear. But, um, if, if when looking at these platforms, you have anything more specific you want me to get information on or advocate in detail, I'll, I'll get back.
What means we don't want you to advocate for it?
Well, right, we don't, with the, the requirement that we have to pay for our, our advocacy for all color meetings in the newspaper, we'd like to get rid of that one.
So if he gets a cut. Correspondence, there's some correspondence in here from the H M. State police, always been reading it, and some good articles from our friends at the. Okay, budget transfer. Move to transfer, I moved to approve the transfer of eleven hundred and twenty eight dollars. On the respective line items listed here. Why are we transferring already?
Oh, it's here in the year next one. It's a new year. It's just to fix small balances.
Eleven twenty eight, any discussion? All those in favor? We have refunds. Uh, move to approve refunds in totally ninety five dollars and fifty four cents. Those listed. On the appropriate sheets and discussion. Move, we approve the payment bills of three hundred and thirteen dollars, two hundred and thirty, two, three hundred, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars and twenty two cents.
There's like fifty five hundred dollars in international truck tires. Is that the truck we're supposed to be replacing? Is that the one?
Yes, we're keeping it alive.
But we're waiting for the replacement.
Right, which is still hard to get.
Understood. I was just curious if that was what I was.
That's the partial payment for lacing, is that?
It's the art that the masonry and.
So. I will tell you that, uh, on page, I don't know. Third row. You'll see there heating oil. Two of about two thousand dollars there. Believe me, Mark and I are taking a very steady glance at the way the energy costs, and they are coming down, so maybe we get closer to what we budgeted for this year, it doesn't come out of pocket, but we're keeping an eye on it. We are listening to our energy consultants.
It's Limbner Logical. That's our, um, LMAC, we have anologist that we hired to do all the research.
Doing all right?
Yes. That's the final bill.
That was the other one.
Yeah, it's the final bill for last year.
Okay, so is the motion on the floor? All those, uh, all those approval paying bills? Or four?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any objections? Audience of citizens. Who recognizes and.
I would, I mean, I can't find my raise the hand, but I have something to say. Is an audience listening?
Well, uh, in a second, I'll call on you next.
Okay.
We'll come back.
Okay, I, I have been attending the Zoom conference on the airline trip. The twelve channel of audience, but it's not. They're putting together like, um, management for you for the whole twelve channels. From Portland to Thompson.
Thank you.
And it's been very, very interesting. And I'm very excited about Columbia's participation in this. Tonight's Zoom meeting about that, um, dealt with developing a website, you love seeing these little labs. But this would, and, and this is to promote the trend, but now they're talking about developing a whole website. So I'm sitting there saying, I'm not the person who should be there. Our recreation director should be tuned in. And our economic development committee should be tuned in. Tom, Ralph, and I, I have been with both of us in there. Tom is the chairman of, uh, the Friends of the Pond, and I'm chair of consultation. And it's important for us to be there, but we're not the ones who are going to make this, that, or try this in Columbia. It would be recreation and economic development. All of these, there's, there's one more, there's total four conferences. There's one more on Thursday. And they have all been recorded. So that I would highly recommend that they at least listen to this. The website is already being developed. And, um, they use, uh, Wyndham's and Thompson's for example, and they have lots of pictures and places you can go, things you can do, wear it, eat. Things like that. And, um, that the director could read from a lot too. And you can promote your town. And there's just so many things. So I just wanted to call that to your attention. Because it's, it's a great day. We're already participating in the hot river of audience, because Columbia's blessed to be both. I mean, it's perfect. And, um, to collaborate with Wyndham because Wyndham and Columbia are at the hub of both of these trails. And so there's, there's a great deal of opportunity there to collaborate with other towns to promote Columbia. And, um, and it could be an economic.
Christine.
Christine?
Yep, sorry, I'm figuring out technology here. Okay, Christine Spizito, sixty two Double Day Road. Um, I, I'm speaking as a, a public citizen, um, and I guess in conjunction with the board mem, I mean, yeah, um, committee member, but, um, as a taxpayer and parent of the two children who go to the school, I am concerned with the amount of pushback and hesitation that our leaders of this town are giving the school and HVAC committee of the need for a more efficient air quality system. What is more important than eradicating a situation that causes our children to breathe in unhealthy air that could consist of mold and might continue to consist of mold? Board of Education in the town has already invested money to help put the Band-Aid on the situation to keep our school up and running, but we need a permanent solution. The Board of Selectmen has asked us to create a committee to help solve the problem. But when a professional tells you the problem, which was the exhaust fan drying in the outside air, and offers a solution, which we referred to in the BBH report, you continue to push back. I would like to clarify. We are not asking for an air conditioner. We're not asking for our school to be air conditioned at the minimum. We are asking for an air quality control system that provides healthy air for everyone in that building to be able to breathe on a regular basis. We're asking for a control system that will dehumidify, have an air exchange system, and have a heating and cooling unit to it. We are also not asking for the whole school system at this time. We're asking for the A wing and an upgraded electrical system. I feel that the members of this board, some members of this Board of Selectmen do not understand and are not accepting what we're actually asking for. And when you mention these things, misinformation is being spread to the town. We're not asking for air conditioning, we're not asking for our luxury, we're asking for what we need. I ask that moving forward, you please keep an open mind to the solutions that are brought before you by our HVAC committee, as you wanted us to be able to do that, and we are spending a lot of our time, we are sending out resources, we are trying to gather the information that you need to be able to present us to our town. But if we do not have your support, our hard work and our, our, our efforts and our time is going wasted. So I just ask, please, moving forward, keep an open mind. Don't just dismiss things that we are, that are said by professionals that are here at the meeting that you call on. And I am referring for Mike Sylvester in this. He was able to give you an answer. He was able to give you a, a, a solution. And I just feel like it's being dismissed. So do we have more information? Do we have more, do we have more to work on? Yes, we do. Can we get more details? Sure, we can. But I just ask, with the different, the acceptance, I'm just not feeling the acceptance from the Board of Education that this truly is a big problem that we have, and we're not, again, asking for a luxury. Any building, any new building that goes up, any building renovation, any ADA requirement. They all are required to have an air quality, uh, air quality control system. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We've seen none. Then. All right, move to the chair. You're right, Bill, board member comments.
I'm, I'm concerned, I want to revisit an issue that I keep bringing up, he says probably, and that is the, um, issue as far as committee membership. Um, I serve on the Economic Development Committee and we've we would like to have, have business owners from town be members of the committee, and it's come back to me from the town. And you have to be an elector of the town. I, I've gone through the, um, the charter, and, and my reading is that if you're an appointed officer or, or, or appointed to a specified agency, that you have to be an elector, but for individual committee, I, I think that required the member to be an elector has a children. the member to be an elector has a chilling effect on, on getting a larger committee, if you're gonna start limiting people. I know when I served on the, um, Youth Services Committee, we had the, um, principal on, on the committee, and we had members from, from the school involved here, so I, I think right now that the interpretation that the town is giving is, is too narrow, and I'd like to address that at a, a future Board Select meeting, and on the agenda.
So, can we mark that on the next meeting? Yes. Lisa.
Um, you know, we were talking, my husband and I, about possibly building our own building, and I was talking about things that had done, I mean, one of the things that I would include in the building, if I were building a building, are light tubes, or solar tubes. It's a little collector on the roof, if you put them in, when you're building a building, and they become integrated into the roof. My mother had one. On an interior laundry room, and when you left, even on a cloudy day, you wanted to flip off the light. It was just that bright, it was one little eight inch, and it was crazy. You get it at Home Depot, like three hundred bucks, but it might be something with DBW, because they're gonna go in, a memo they should have in the new building. They should have light sensors, motion sensors. But I gotta tell you, a light tube, a solar light tube collector is quite a thing, and it might be worth the investment. You never turn, I mean, we just, we never turn that light on, and they even have them now, they have a light in them, so you can have a light in the tube, so they serve as both. They're just nice, they're nice little units, no doubt.
Anybody else? Matt, I move to enjoy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eight thirty one. You got that technology here in the states?